Raymond, would you lead us in prayer?
I would. My gracious heavens, Father, Lord, we've come to you tonight. We've come to you humbly tonight, Lord. We ask you for your guidance tonight. Lord, we want to thank you for all the things that you bestowed upon us individually, as a group, and as a city. Lord, we want to welcome newly-elected councilpersons tonight. We would ask you, Lord, to put your hand on them and make sound decisions that's good with their heart. Lord, if you would, forgive us of all our sins and let us make the decisions tonight that will be the best and Christian to the community and all its citizens. Say it in Jesus' Christ's name. Amen.
First up, we need to canvass the votes. Summary of precinct returns, I have the underside, the presiding office of the canvassing authority for the general and special elections held on the sixth day of May 2017, City of Jasper, in Jasper County, Texas, to hereby certify that the following is a total of all the votes received by each candidate, as shown by the precinct return. I further certify that the following votes totals include early voting votes by precinct received under Section 87.1231 of the Texas Election Code. Mayor Randy Sayers unopposed, 423. Councilman in District 1, Rashad Lewis, received 109. Councilman, or Council seat 1 also. Aaron Allen, 59. Rashad won. Council seat District 2, Thomas Scofield was unopposed, received 175. Proposition 1 was approved, 266 to 261. Proposition 2 was defeated, 311 to 210. Proposition 3 was defeated, 332 to 190. And Proposition 4 was defeated, 304 to 219. This is dated May 15, 2017. And then the next ordinance, the next canvassing of the propositions, this has to be approved with an ordinance. The ordinance is canvassing of the returns and declaring the results of a charter amendment election held in the City of Jasper on May 6, 2017. Do I have a motion to accept that canvassing?
I make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That'll pass. Next item on the agenda, Judge Jackson to give the oath of office to the newly-elected councilmembers in District 1, District 2, and Mayor.
Y'all would like to, all three of you, come around to the front. We're gonna do a little Texas two-step because we've got a mayor and then we have councilmen. So some of the terminology is just a little different. I think we've got at least one person here with a camera, so please share and smile. Would you raise your right hand and repeat after me? And after I say the word "aye," then you'll say "aye" and insert your name.
Okay.
Aye?
Aye, Randy Sayers.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I have not directly
I have not directly.
or indirectly
or indirectly.
paid, offered, or promised to pay
paid, offered, or promised to pay.
contributed, or promised
contributed, or promised.
any money or thing of value
any money or thing of value.
or promised any public office
or promised any public office.
or employment for the giving
or employment for the giving.
or withholding of a vote
or withholding of a vote.
at the election at which I was elected
at the election at which I was elected.
or as a reward to secure
or as a reward to secure.
my appointment or confirmation
my appointment or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
whichever the case may be.
so help me God.
so help me God.
And you've executed under penalties of perjury that you've read that foregoing statement. This is your oath of office again. After I say "aye," then you'll say "aye" and you insert your name. Aye?
Aye, Randy Sayers.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office of Mayor of the City of Jasper
my duties as office of Mayor of the City of Jasper.
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution
the Constitution.
and laws of the United States
and the laws of the United States.
and of this state
and of this state.
so help me God.
so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a beautiful plaque that they have for you to be able to put on your wall. The first will just be this statement. Again, I will, you heard the way we did mayor-sayers. I'll say the word "aye," and then each of you will say "aye" and state your name. The rest of it will be identical, okay? Aye?
Aye, Randy Lewis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I have not directly
that I have not directly.
or indirectly
or indirectly.
paid, offered, or promised to pay
paid, offered, or promised to pay.
contributed
contributed.
or promised to contribute
or promised to contribute.
any money or thing of value
any money or thing of value.
or promised any public office
or promised any public office.
or employment
or employment.
for the giving
for the giving.
or withholding
or withholding.
of a vote
of a vote.
at the election at which I was elected or as a reward
or as a reward.
to secure my appointment
to secure my appointment.
or confirmation
or confirmation.
whichever the case may be
whichever the case may be.
so help me God. Then it'll be "aye," then you'll say "aye" and your name.
Aye, Randy Lewis.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will faithfully execute
that I will faithfully execute.
the duties of the office
the duties of the office.
of councilman
of councilman.
and Officer Scofield, here's the councilman District number 2. Mr. Lewis, councilman District number 1
councilman District number 1.
of the State of Texas
of the State of Texas.
and will to the best of my ability
and will to the best of my ability.
preserve, protect, and defend
preserve, protect, and defend.
the Constitution
the Constitution.
and laws of the United States
and laws of the United States.
and of this state
and of this state.
so help me God. Congratulations. Yeah, I mean, these are nice-looking deals. They spend some hard money, though. Congratulations. Smile for Debbie. She wants to kiss your picture. And I think there are a few more. Y'all tell me when you approve. Yeah. If you'd like your family to come up, we can do that right now. Yeah, I think they're shy. Everybody good?
Alvin has been on council, has served for six years, have done great service to this city.
Yes, sir.
You ready to go? Actually, I want to add something. Instead of doing the department reports first, Reverend McBride?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. I want to talk about the ruins out there in AL subdivision. My councilwoman been out there and she saw the ruins for herself. Rice has already ruined that government. They didn't do a good job out there. The holes and things are still there, and it's just bad. And so, I don't know what they've been doing out there, but it should have been a better job than this.
I saw where we just chip sealed out there. Was it even after they put the new top down, still potholes and such?
Yes. All they did was came through, edged the edge of the roadway, came back through, put some black tar on it, and put rocks on it. Holes still there. There's more rice growing up in the road now than there was before. I guess the tar made it grow. I don't know. But I'm being honest. There's more rice growing up in the road now than there was before. I guess the tar had something to do with it. But, you know what? And think about it, we used to be able to walk around the block. You can't walk on the rocks. And nobody sure can slip up on you. You could have come in a mile. And so, I don't know, something needed to be done.
Thank you.
All right.
Departmental reports. You've had them. If you have any questions now would be the time. No questions? All right. Let's go to first item on the agenda.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
I made an application to Mr. Humphries. I feel like I'm being diglific. I apologize.
That was earlier in the month?
No, well into the month.
And then I had given it to you, and you, I believe you had one of the street guys or someone contact him?
Yes. If you'd like to, go ahead and speak. To the man, the councilman, to I, we were, that's just, to all of us, that's the deal. I'm of the same opinion as Reverend McBride. But about five years ago, let me go back to the '70s, '80s. Mr. Stewart was on the city council, and he made mention of how Jasper had taken us out of the mud and had provided streets for us. The only thing that we didn't do, you have to pay for the curb and gutter. We should have paid for it, or we should have put in a tax to pay for it. What Reverend McBride is saying is better if you have curb and gutter. It doesn't bother that much as to what we are pertaining to. Most of the whites have curb and gutter, and you pay for it. But the blacks don't have curb and gutter, and they would pay for it, even if you told them to do that. So Mr. Stewart said, in the council meeting room, when they were meeting up there, what they were trying to help building right around there. He said, "We got you out of the mud." And as far as I can see, Jasper is one of the cities that probably have more paved streets in the black neighborhood than any city it is sized, and I compliment you for that. But five years ago, they came to the water line and put it away in the middle of the street, on Boyd, South Boyd. And they left a little dip in it, and for as I'm concerned, I'm here to help the city. I love Jasper, and Jasper's been good to me. But most people that going down Houston Street, and if they're going to 190, they'll come off Houston Street and come down Boyd, and then go to Boyd to hit 190. So that little dip that we got in there, it's began to be pretty bad. And I know that someday somebody gonna get hurt. And if they do, I mean, they'll be trying to suit the city. So I'd want to ask you to come. Mr. P has already come over there. He started on it, and he needs to come back and just level it up as far as the rest of it is concerned. I think that the main thing that I want to say is dangerous right now. And somebody coming in, and a gypsy coming in, even backing out, is hard on your truck, hard on our truck, and hard on the cars. I think that we ought to attest to that and look at that. I'm just concerned about the streets in Jasper, and I'm concerned about Boyd as of now. And I know there are the streets that would be the same. But anyway, I can help, I will help. But it needs to be looked at, you know? Now, let me just throw this in. Somebody told me they have $12 million to fix streets. I don't know if that's what they say, you know? They say it a whole lot around Jasper, they don't care where it'll be. And they say that if they don't pay it, they gonna send it back, but Louis, I mean. They say you have to pay interest. I don't know about that. And I sure would have to pay interest on $12 million because I didn't use it. So I'm asking you to please check Boyd out, will you please?
Yes, sir.
And so, I'm not complaining, but I am complaining. Well, just get the water and wash it. All right. I have to go to the city, the hospital, go with me, and then you go over there. I hate to leave such a good-looking group. Y'all show a dope crew.
Mr. Bill, can I add something to? Can I have your say?
Yes, sir.
It is also concerning South Boyd Street, where I've lived for 50 years. Now, right down the middle of Boyd Street, you ran in line, water line. So you had to cut a deep ditch going, as I call ditch, a drainage floor. And you covered it up, but you didn't cover it all the way up.
Yeah.
You left a space about four feet wide in the middle of the street, which was about, I'd say about four inches deep, right in the middle. So you couldn't drive down the middle of the street. You had to get well on one side or on the other side.
That's right.
And so, it's been bad. Bunch of vehicles going up and down. I've had to have work done on my truck because of those situations. And I think it's really, and I will say it like that, I think it's a shame that we have situations like that in our city. Now, if you don't believe it, come to Boyd, South Boyd Street.
Yeah.
South Boyd Street. And you'll see, drive down there, you'll bump and everything else. Now, we paid for curb and gutter
That's right.
when they first did it. We paid for it. I paid for my section. And so, there's no excuse for us to be living in a situation like this. Now, I've seen y'all fix streets. Fix streets, they're in much better shape than Boyd. It went in and overlaid or whatever.
Yeah.
And that's really bumpy, and all this kind of stuff. So I think that it's time for y'all to look at this. I've called the intensity two or three people before, even to the mayor. And so, I'm asking y'all to look at Boyd Street. I've had to put my truck in a shop, because of shops and stuff going up in that Boyd. And I don't want to have to ask y'all to pay for all that.
Yeah.
Thank you, and ask your help.
Thank you.
Good, good.
All right. I don't want, the next item on our agenda is to elect a mayor pro temp. Do I have any nominations for that office?
I'll nominate myself, nobody else will nominate me.
All right, we've got Hazel and Raymond. All right. Could be all in favor for Raymond, say aye. It's two. All in favor for Hazel?
Aye.
That's two.
That's three for Raymond.
That would be three for Raymond. And Raymond is the mayor pro temp.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You've got a set of minutes. Set of one set of minutes from the last meeting, April 17. Do I have a motion to accept? Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the right sign? Pass unanimously. Let's see where we are on this one. Strike number three. Strike number four. Number five, consider rebid on the trinitate of property, if you'd like to.
Mayor and councilmember, when we started work on the trinitate property in 2015, the land appraised from appraisal district at $67,638. By the time we got finished and got reached in negotiations in 2016, the appraisal district had raised the dollar amount to $123,000 for just the land. And that was what we had based our minimum bids when we went out for proposals to purchase the property. We received no offers to buy that property at that rate. The city, we had also tacked on $27,000 for the city's cost for disposing of the debris. I would like to disregard that and suggest that we go back out for proposals at least $60,000 or $65,000, get into more reasonable dollar amounts. I can't see a $60,000 increase in one year on the same piece of property. But I'm open for suggestions of whatever y'all would like to be able to do regarding this property. We need to get it sold and get it back on a tax basis, so that somebody can do something.
So the appraisal district went up?
Yes, sir.
$60,000.
They went from $60-
They doubled.
$67.6 to $123.2.
And we had voted to sell it through the appraisal.
Well, we started at the $123, we added the $27 to it, so.
I think we made the settlement at least about $60,000.
I'm basing a motion that we put him back up with a bid of $60,000.
Sir.
Is that in addition to these costs?
No, we decided, so the cost that we incurred, it was our labor. The only thing that some of this cost included was debris that we hauled into Angelina landfill.
Place good cost.
Mr. Nation, did they give you any explanation why they doubled?
This was when, if you remember, all the appraisal district was taking sections and went to carpet bill, and then they hit to Jasper, and they were hitting all Jasper County and Brooklyn and everything else, and do it to the appraisal district. They could not give me an answer why.
Evidently, that's been a problem all over the county.
Yeah.
And it's getting pretty much to the point where people can't sell their house, because of what the tax value is.
Well, you're just talking about 1.13 acres. I know it's highway frontage, but that's still a lot of money to increase it by in a matter of a year.
If the concrete were off there, it would probably be more than that. I suspect clearing that old thing off of there had a good bit to do with it, plus the fact that highway frontage is now.
See, they had, no, they had the land and the facility, the property, the building and structure separate. So the $123 and the $67 is land only.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, once they got that old piece of building off there
Oh, yeah.
you know, the land value probably shot up.
But see, this was before.
Once they get concrete on there.
But this was before. It had already raised to $123 before we even started tearing it down.
Oh, really? Before it didn't? We have a motion in a second.
All right, discussion done. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Pass unanimously. That should be your entire agenda.
Now, we've got one more. Number six. Number six was the considered workshop.
Oh, yeah. Considered workshop for the splash pad work property.
And we'd like to add a couple of items more to that as far as the street bids that we tabled.
Right.
And the employees.
We can do that, yes.
We can just, we can set the agenda later, but what we just need to do is set a-
The purpose of this is to set a date for a workshop?
Yes, sir.
Do you want it in the next week or two weeks?
I would really like it either the 20th, by the 24th, I'm supposed to have some more information on our Main Street project, for the engineer today. I would like to have it either the 24th or the 31st, which is a Wednesday, and I'll have a lunch workshop.
So the 31st is on a Wednesday?
Yes, sir. Is that okay with you? 31st, okay?
Do you have any question?
Yes, sir.
That'll be fine. Set it for trial.
31st, and then, and now, thank y'all. You still have one more item? Your agenda number two. Item number nine, consider true request from T-Paul.
I don't, hang on, not on this one.
Your natural, turning it.
Okay. Consider, I'm sorry, girl. Yeah, come on ahead.
I came to y'all a couple of months ago when we were writing a grant to update our body cameras, where they were distinct, whether car cameras, and then download, and ones we have now are outdated, during the malfunction. Regardless, the grant was totaled for $27,935 with a match of $5,587. And we got the grant, and I'm asking for the $5,587 to pay our portion of the grant. We'd be getting $27,000 worth of equipment for $5,000. We've been getting twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of equipment for five thousand, fifty-five eighty-seven. And that's about something to get. How much motion, I said that.
A second. There are a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, pass unanimously. Now, your second.
Okay, the second item, we have two vacancies. This is existing positions, and then it went vacant, they moved to different agencies, and I'm just asking permission to take out some, to fill those positions.
We still have plenty of ample for that.
Yes, they're, they're already existing, but we're doing, filling them.
I make a motion to approve.
Sure, in a second.
Thanks.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
Thank you.
Gerald, how's the, how's the dare thing transitioning? Have we, have we stepped out of it?
We are in current, working on getting paperwork and everything lined up to transfer equipment and funds, et cetera, to the county.
The county has a pretty good.
Got one thing I'd like to say, just got some news this afternoon, and I hope tonight when you go home, keep some people in Shelby County in your prayers tonight. They had a tremendous accident the first night, supposedly involving an eighteen wheeler and a school bus. It's, you know, those are never good. If you would, keep them, keep them in your prayers when you lay down tonight, because that's our children, some of those buses. Keep them.